From October 21st, 2019, we stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, yes.
Councilman Scaringe is absent due to military leave. Councilman Livingston?
Present.
Councilman McCross?
Present.
Councilman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Pappasback?
Present.
Councilman Matzo?
Present.
President Scanlon?
Present.
Six-year, one abs, six degrees.
All right, we'll go over the agenda for one minute. I had a conversation with Ken Frank this morning. I don't know if anybody else has worked. Councilman Livingston has an intern, which we want to talk about next. So you, did you go to court council before you hired the intern?
I believe I spoke with Sharon Sorkin at our court council's office. And maybe someone from HR. I was trying to figure out if there was a formal process inside of City Hall for me to bring the intern through. And as I recall, I was told that there is no internship program for City Council. I believe, I also remember hearing with Councilman Skaringe has talked about setting up some sort of an internship program for City Council in the past, but that absent that, I didn't have the... I can't remember exactly what the conclusion was from that, but that there needed to be a formal internship process through City Council for me to have the intern work with me, I think. That was my recollection, at least.
And you never brought it up to City Council?
The legislation, no.
The intern?
What's that, sorry?
You never brought it up to hire the intern with us. Because it says in here that she is working with City Council. I think, what I'm reading, I never knew about it.
Yeah, so...
Other council members have had interns and haven't brought it up to City Council.
Who has? Well, I have, but they've only been under me, not all of City Council. The problem, Dan, is that you have her listed under all of City Council, like she's representing all of us. And she said most just things that I don't agree with made into these files.
Well, so I talked with the internship, I guess the internship field internship coordinator over at City Hall. And apparently, the MOU was drafted as a project by the intern. And it wasn't like a standard form that seemed to use this for.
Let's go back though, you didn't feel the need to bring this in front of City Council? To tell us about it?
That I had, that I was working with an intern?
No, no, not that you were working with an intern, but that the intern was supposed to complete a minimum of 300 hours of service with Binghamton City Council. Didn't say with Councilman Livingston, it says Binghamton City Council. We had no knowledge of her. And personally, I would like to see the work that she did. She turned it in to you, I imagine.
Yes, and I passed it along to Ken Frank. She did tax policy research and she looked into the sewage treatment plant privatization stuff too, but it was mostly tax policy research.
What was the reason for that?
So what we had set up was, we're working informally with a professor at the School of Public Administration, who was looking to have a class research project that he was going to do next semester. And what we were doing was aggregating data for... They were basically going to look at the city's tax policy to see if there were... We were looking specifically at the homestead classification, other municipalities around the state that have a homestead classification. We were pulling municipal budgets from those municipalities. And also, we were looking at municipalities with outdated tax assessments that were as old or, I think it was like 10 years or older. And we're looking, I think specifically, at a cross-section of homestead classified municipalities that also had outdated tax assessments older than 10 years. It's a really small subset of municipalities and...
And where was she doing all this from?
From her computer. She did everything remotely. I, you know, had calls with her. And she would, we had shared documents that we used online.
There was other things here that she was supposed to be doing for you also. Policy development review. What is that?
Policy development review? I'm not entirely sure.
It says she may continue under Binghamton City Council. She never worked under Binghamton City Council.
I don't disagree, that was a mistake.
Did she do campaign work for you?
Not on the internship, no. The internship was justice research.
While she was in the internship, though?
Say that again?
Was it all, she was in the internship during the time?
During the time that she was an intern, that she was doing work for you? Attending to your campaign?
Yes, but the two were separate. That was something.
But she's still your intern.
How do you separate?
I talked with the internship coordinator.
Okay, but if she's a city...
I talked with the internship coordinator at City Binghamton about it. They have policies and I saw, I followed those policies.
First, I've got concerns over this. I mean, there's, you always talk about transparency. And here, you did something this whole beginning of summer, before summer, with no knowledge of, for us, no knowledge that you went ahead and got an intern for Binghamton City Council.
I was not trying to get an intern for Binghamton City Council. The School of Public Administration let me fill out a number of forms to set up the internship. And I didn't represent myself as a representative of the Binghamton City Council in those forms. And I hadn't realized that I wasn't signing some standard memorandum of understanding that it was crafted specifically by the intern as a class project for this. And I checked back, you know, she shared her emails with me when she was communicating with anyone from the outside. The only other place where she made that mistake was on her LinkedIn profile, which is how Corporation Council was alerted to the...
Right, otherwise, it would not have been alerted to me.
Right, but she wasn't representing Binghamton City Council in her communications outside of the internship program, aside from the LinkedIn profile.
But it still says that she's a City Council intern.
Ken, I mean, what, I'm not asking with what's going on here. What's your evaluation of this?
No, it has to be reviewed. Because it wasn't, and Dan, when you came and I talked to Sharon, I talked to Leanna, they specifically said, "You want to do this, talk to City Council, set it up, get a protocol, do all these things." And so, I'm not sure when you're saying, you know, "I didn't know there was procedures, so I just went ahead and do it." You were good enough to ask the questions in advance. And to be honest, when I wrote to her and said, because I didn't know whose intern she was, what I assumed would happen is that whoever had retained her would come up and say, "Oh, that's my intern, you know, this is what happened," and instead, it would snowball. I really expected whoever's intern it was would stand up and say, "This is what we did, this is the project that the intern's doing, I'd be happy to share the results," you know, whatever it may be. But instead, there was silence, and that's what created the issue. That's how it snowballed. So, I think at this juncture, and I looked at the work that was done, and I mean, 34 hours out of 300 that were spent doing what's in the MOU. That's a problem. There's nothing about joint sewage in the MOU. They spent 32 hours doing joint sewage.
That's a big concern.
Wait, they spent 32 hours doing joint sewage?
Based on the timesheets that you provided to us, right? 32 of those hours are related to joint sewage in some way.
Okay.
Including one date where she lists what her activity is, plan of attack. That's not nonpartisan work.
Plan of attack.
That's conflict of interest.
You know what, so this doesn't look...
I don't know what that...
That's exactly what you gave to us.
Sure, sure, I mean, I wasn't about to, you know, edit the...
But I'm saying, that's what's creating these concerns.
Okay.
May I suggest, so this doesn't look like some, I'm sorry, did you want to?
Well, I just, from a standpoint, and I believe that there's correspondence between the Office of Corporation Council and Binghamton University that all of City Council should have, that outlines a number of different concerns. But as part of this development, you know, the city was informed by at least the MPA program that they would not be wanting to place interns with City Hall. That is a problem for the administration as it relates to a critical pipeline for students who are graduating to take jobs, as well as, you know, good civic engagement for interns that any other department, specifically planning, have a great working relationship with the city. And I'm not sure what led to them believing that, but there was a paid internship for a BU student that City Council did not know about, the work product of which either does not exist nor has been shared with City Council. At the same time, this individual is being paid, Councilman Livingston, by your political campaign, making them a paid campaign staffer. There is a no-show, or no-show, or some show internship under the guise of Binghamton City Council. And the issues that that has caused, the ripple effects, to sully the reputation of City Hall with Binghamton University is unacceptable. And now, we have to pick up the pieces and we have to deal with what the aftermath is. So, that's what I'm working on. And that's the information that was not shared with City Council. I have a million questions about this.
Tom, may I make suggestions here?
Sure.
So it doesn't look like we're ganging up on you, because we're all concerned about what happened here. I want to request that City Council do an outside review as quick as we can possibly arrange that. Ken, I don't really know about that.
What I would do is see if I can find like an ethics lawyer or something, try to give them the info ASAP, copy everything that Councilman Livingston has given us so far and all the other correspondence.
Let's do it, they said. We have to, I'll take a motion.
Does have to be voted on?
It's got to be voted on, yeah.
So what's the, I'm not familiar with this process. He said an outside review?
An attorney, outside Ken Frank.
Okay.
Because Ken Frank works for City.
Got it.
To look into this. Right, so we don't, so it's not something that we're coming up? I mean, just want to see an outside review and see where this thing lands. Because it's always, I mean, it seems like it's always something...
Just, you know, I have copied the Attorney General, but I copied the Attorney General primarily because of my concern with the university. I want to make sure they're in that loop.
And just so you guys know, my understanding from talking with the internship coordinator is that there was a concern, and this is not a concern that the intern expressed to the university, but when, so there was a FOIL request that came in for the memorandum of understanding and an email from Ken Frank. And apparently, they felt that there was a lot of attention coming on to this intern and they were concerned about her, I don't know, her safety or whatever. Not her physical safety, but just, they were concerned that she was being attacked in some way.
We didn't even, we don't even know who she is.
I know, I'm not talking about you.
Who?
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about you. I mean, what I'm saying is that this is what the internship coordinator said was the reason why they sent that email about taking interns from City Hall. It wasn't...
If they felt they're being tagged by somebody sitting here?
I think that it, you know, from what the internship coordinator told me, it was the tone of the email from Corporation Council that made them feel like there was some adversarialness or aggression or whatever coming from City Hall against this intern. And that's why they pulled the intern from the internship. She's going to complete her hours through another internship, but...
When did they pull her?
I would have to look back in my calendar, I'm not entirely sure. She hadn't completed the internship, so it wasn't after too long.
Don't you feel responsible yourself for putting her in that situation? You're the one who led her there, you're the one who put this out without us knowing, without anybody having any idea. And you used her to help your campaign as well. I think you should hopefully find your apologies.
Let's get to the bottom of it with an outside review. Somebody has to make a motion.
Well, can I just clarify one thing? So my first email to the university was on September 19th. The internship was supposed to go on through August 20th. But the time slips that you gave me stopped in July 27th or 28th. So there's nothing that I could have said or done that could have interfered with the internship, because the internship would have expired almost a month before I wrote the first email.
It's already over.
She was going to complete her hours over the course of the next semester.
Okay, but again, the time slips that you gave to me, the time she stopped at the end of July.
That was all the work that she had done on the internship.
Okay, let's go on. I make a motion for outside review.
I'll second that.
Jess, can we have a vote, please?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Pappasback?
Aye.
Councilman Matzo?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six days, one absence, Scaringe.
All right, let's get into the agenda. Chuck Shager's up. RL 19-189, Chuck.
President Hayes, Jeff put me on early today because I have some other things, but I can change some of what some of the other people have.
Okay.
Much things to go.
Chief here?
Chief is a council senior, I don't know if we can do that, but I can do that.
Yeah, that one's not going to be your job.
Right, it didn't really matter, yeah. All right, we'll go to Bernice. 196, Bernice, please.
This is to transfer money. We need to fund our call pay, which is part of the Teamsters contract for this snow season. And also, this transferring money to buy salt to get us to the end of the year.
Questions or comments?
How much salt do you think we need?
Um, we have about 700 tons right now.
That's good for one snowstorm.
Hopefully, to get through December. So we're transferring money to, it should take us to about 1,500 tons, which should be good to look at us through the end of the year.
Correct, not we will be bad, whichever.
Well, hopefully, we don't get the snow.
Right, let's do that. All right, Bernice, 19-202, please.
This is, oh, we're transferring money into our construction materials and this is for patch to get us here for the rest of the year.
Questions or comments? That was easy, Bernice, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Do Paul next?
Yeah, we'll do Paul, sure.
He's got an awful big one.
Funds for a corn ice rink, I like this idea. I'm not sure you do, but I like it.
I'll find out. It's the mayor's wish that we have an ice skating rink. So the monies are coming from temporary lines. And they've all, all their, they've all been done for the season. So this is money that's left over in those particular budget lines. So in order for us to come up with the money, that's, we'd like to transfer that for the...
How much is it?
Just shy of 50,000. And it would be set up for the winter at Rec. Lilly Field. And then we continue, just be probably mid-December if we can get ahold of everything we need. So just about February.
How big is this rink?
30 by 60, it's not huge, but it's a good start.
Correct.
See how it works.
How's it, I've seen the pictures, you're probably, looks it connect together?
Well, actually, it's not piping, it's a mat, so to speak. So we have a chiller, just like an ice rink would have. It keeps that pad cold up to 50 degrees, you can have ice.
You anticipate me over there every day to put water on it?
Uh, we'll have to maintain it.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we don't have to do it every single day. But they also sell a groomer kind of thing that we can keep it up. So hopefully, we won't have to, you know, spray every single day.
Now, how much water do those...
It's only really, in any professional rink, it's only two or three inches of ice. It's not very, it's not a ton of water.
Even on the hockey rinks, it's only like two quarters of a inch.
Yeah.
It's not very thick, I used to paint the ice.
So there's little dashboards, just enough to hold everything. There's not boards like a rink hockey.
Sorry, I missed, where is it going to be deployed?
Rep. Bation Park up on the Lilly Field, which would also incorporate the field lights, so we could do it in the evening as well.
Would you, you anticipate having somebody there for the parks?
Yeah.
Like an attendant type thing?
Yeah, we would have to.
Yeah.
And we, when they luck, we could perhaps do something with, I don't know what they call them, a shenango ice rink? Maybe we could rent some skates to themselves.
That'd be great, yeah.
How do you keep people off of when there's no attendants there? Why do you not just want to...
You don't have to do that, I mean, they can go and skate as long as there's...
Well, we hope not, you know. I don't know how you would keep them off, especially if they're police patrol or something to that effect. That's what we're up to.
Used to be behind the bathhouse at Rec. Park.
Before the pool, yeah.
Before the pool, they would put the...
They held speed skating events there.
Yeah, it was really something.
All over the city. They had, these all over the city, I remember distinctly. And they had the little sheds open to get warm. Right. But...
Rec. Fair, one year still.
Yeah. They had the event at Shenango Valley State Park, and they can't keep ice there either, so they went to a chiller process, so the weather's just not the same.
So if this works out well at Rec. Park, you can do it at others. Towards town, maybe?
I would think maybe one more on another, the opposite side of town somewhere. Maybe Lindsey's Lilly Field, something to that effect.
See how many people are still interested in ice skating?
Are there questions or comments? What's your question? Are there questions or comments?
Is there going to be a charge for...
Any idea what the hour is going to be?
I would think that if you want to skate all day, you could. I don't know if we put a cap on it. I mean, there'd be a certain amount of time where we'd have to groom and clean up.
I'm talking about after hours, you know, like night.
Yeah.
As you said, you're going to have one time with it.
Yeah. I don't know, we haven't got all the details yet, but we want to get it first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great, I like the idea.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, please.
I'm here, so let's do this again.
Hi, Chris, how we doing? Good, how are you?
Great. If you remember, Chris was actually here at the last meeting. Yes. He described what the agreement did in Johnson City. I just didn't realize that an RL hadn't been submitted.
Okay.
Apparently, it was for discussion, there was no RL at the time. So that's why it's on again tonight, because I wrote up the RL for this meeting. But otherwise, it's the same agreement, it's really all Binghamton standards.
As long as you're using the same standards, the testing's the same?
It's actually, we're doing a testing. It's a standardized national test.
Sure.
So it's pretty equal with other municipalities. And we're seeing that if anybody from either municipality takes and passed the test, then they can use the results of that exam to obtain their licenses to be primarily licensed in Johnson City, which Binghamton reciprocate with, or they can be primarily licensed here in Johnson City reciprocate with. And this went to the plumbing board, they made some suggestions, we made revisions. Actually, it's been sent to Johnson City and they already approved it.
So you're doing that with plumbers, you're going to do that with electricians?
Electricians is already existing.
Oh, does it?
Plumbers had been existing for quite some time. There was a problem maybe five or six years ago where the cities decided not to reciprocate with each other. I think it was Johnson City was not happy with the way things were working out. But their plumbing board was banded, and now it's being overseen by the town board. And they hired Charles Sacco to put together an agreement to get it up and running again. And they're eagerly anticipating our response.
Any questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. President, I got to talk to Chris outside.
Yeah, sure. Ken Frank, you want to go over yours?
Let me jump to mine.
Oh, sure.
The first one I have here is a finance clerk. I eliminated this position when I did some things back in my earlier July, August time period. I had some changes. And since this position's going to go back in the budget on January 1st, but right now, I have, one person left me about a month ago. I have two individuals that are in and out on leave, okay? Which is making things pretty difficult in the office. So I'm asking that we fund this for the remaining part of the year at the current salary that was there earlier this year. And then, as part of this process, redo some of the offices. I have a lot of people sitting out in the middle of the hallways. I'm not that a fan of offices, but utilize the space better in that office where there's people sitting in front of glass windows that get cold or wear it down. So I try to split it up a little bit.
Chuck, just so I'm clear, this is an existing position, right?
It's an existing position that I said I would not fund, I think in July, after one of my employees retired and I had to pay out their, I think, other payouts and stuff like that to get through the end of the year. And with my deputy comptroller left me at the end of August, and then September, that two other people now out on different issues. It's making the office very difficult. I'd like to fill this up, help us out through the last two months of the year. If anybody has any questions?
203?
Questions or comments?
No.
Let's go to 203.
Oh, yeah.
203, Chuck.
The next one is, every year, people that work in the city that are either appointed or management tested are not part of a union, pay a percentage of the health insurance cost. That's what I'm coming down here. And if you look on page two, you can see what the cost has been going back to 2014. We're asking to increase each one of these plans 1%. That these employees will contribute more in 2020.
Questions or comments? How much of the increase is history?
Really depends what the rates are. Take someone that's paying, a high end pays $1,500 a month, times 1%, and that would be $15 a month. Then, would that calculate to $500 an hour? One would be, you know, five hours.
All right.
And it's pretty much what the standard is that we have with our unions for the most part. Each year, we try to increase it 1%.
Other questions or comments? All right, Chuck, thank you.
I have one more to do here. I told you before, Chief Livingston couldn't be here on the older pass for the fire department. We're asking to move basically $110,000. Took every damn I could pretty much figure in his department. For the remaining part of the year, come up with $10,000. We're taking money from Hunfield Fire... It's number 10, page is 10 and 12, Dan, I'm sorry. We're taking $71,000 from Hunfield Fire, fire positions, $8,000 for restraining training, personal service of the assistant chief that we hadn't used up yet, and a probationary firefighter that we didn't have filled for a couple of months this year to do that. But what I really wanted to share with you, just so you understood this a little bit, the amount of money that in July, excuse me, in June, we used $100,000 the amount of money that, in July, excuse me, in June, we used a hundred thousand dollars with the fire overtime, in July it was a hundred and seven, in August it dropped down to seventy-five, in September it dropped down to forty-eight, and October right now for half of the month, it's sixteen thousand, so it's going in the right direction, quite substantially. So, and Chief is making some headway and changing things to make that happen. We usually send them to paramedic school, and then when we do that, it might be three or four people, you have to pay overtime when they're in school, for people to cover for them, we stop that until we get this thing all squared away.
Question's on one nine dash two zero one.
I know they hire five new people in training right now.
We have five in training.
Good.
You mentioned that this is going to come down one more time?
We're going to have to, this pretty much gets us even through the middle of October, okay?
So, you know, I, I might not just, I might just not be understanding that numbers correctly, but during the budget process, it, it sounded like, you know, as of the end of, I think it was August, you know, most of the people were back and the problem was solved, so why are we still facing into these, facing to overtime problems?
We're going to have overtime-- Kevin, we're going to have overtime no matter what, I mean, I think every year we budget two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. We can anticipate that, because when people call in sick, or sometimes take vacation, depending on how many you have, you have to move people, and usually involves bringing people in for overtime.
So the, this, this amount is going to be typical for next year's budget?
Yes, yes, correct. That's what we anticipate, although I will say that Christmas and Thanksgiving, sometimes we have a little larger number than other periods.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Chuck. Are you doing Chief Sukuski's, too?
What are we doing, Ron?
Okay.
Jared said he can do Chief's customer list.
All right, Ron, step up, please.
How are you?
One nine seven, Ron.
Okay, that's for Danforth Tractor thirteen, solid sanding. There are a number of items there that we're not known about when the project started or else weren't that provided for, there are things that we absolutely had to get done. There might be some light at the end of the tunnel for this project, because Ed tells me that most of this, or ninety-five percent of this, may be possible to get reimbursed from FEMA, so I'll work with Ed and see if we can't get that done.
What, why?
Why?
This is located within the boundaries of the digester complex, the ninety-four point sixty percent, and that's subject to a project worksheet under FEMA, which is being pursued on an improved project basis, which means you don't have to build it back the way it was before the flood. And at this point, there's about two million five hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars that hasn't been submitted yet that, you know, is, is available. So I suspect that the amount that's involved, that's, you know, digester complex related on this change order would be able to fit into that.
And was this, no, was this included in the original scope of work for, for the plan? And, and if not, why not?
Because, because most of that digester complex was supposed to be just reused, maybe cleaned, but when we started cleaning it, we found a problem with broken pipes and valves, and flame arrestors had to be relocated, so, but it was not in the original project. Why, other than the fact that they thought most of it was going to be usable, or wasn't?
Why did they think it was usable?
Because it wasn't, it wasn't in the original scope of work, so, it was stuff that the plant had taken care of.
And, and Jacobs is responsible for creating that scope of GHD?
GHD.
Right, okay. So why isn't J, GHD responsible for this change order? Didn't include it in the original scope of work?
Because it, it wasn't there, it wasn't known to be deficient, so I don't, we can look at it, but I don't know if we can hold GHD responsible for it.
Is there--
Like new things that came up?
Is there a process that you go through to determine, you know, whose mistake it was before bringing change orders to--
You'll notice if you look at your change order, you get to, to look back to where it's itemized.
Yep.
You'll see that there's a box that should be checked, and it says like change condition on the provided equipment, design modification permits, only elected, so whatever those are, these all say change condition. If I know it's something that's not a change condition and it's a design modification, I cross that out and I'll mark it. So if I'm aware that might not have been a change condition, I'll mark it so that everybody knows.
Uh, sorry--
This is marked, designed, modified.
That one is?
Yeah. There's different ones, there's--
There's all different ones.
So what's the difference between change, just with these types, do you check, what's the difference between a change condition and a design modification?
Usually a change condition is, is what you may have learned, that it wasn't discovered during the design process, or it's underground, you don't know. Like one of the pipes, when, when this was broken somewhere underground, nobody could know that until we tried to pressure test it and use it. So that caused that. Now, there might be something where there's interference, it could be a change design or a change condition, or a design modification, may or may not be a design error, just may be, be something that's more beneficial.
When the, the design of the project was being undertaken, you know, this would have been before your time, is it common practice to, to test the equipment as it is, to test the facilities as they exist before or during the process of designing, the refurbishment or the upgrade, how we want to refer to it?
You usually can't test the equipment, you remember, this stuff was all flooded, it wasn't in the shape to be tested until we got to this point.
Kevin, if we're going to talk to you more about this, I think it's your executive session. Well, if you're going to get into specifics, I think there, at the moment, you're asking generalities, but if you're going to start talking about specifics--
Well, I guess my general question would be then, if something's, if something isn't in good enough shape to operate or to pass, why was the assumption made that it would be good enough to operate for, you know, the final--
Because it, because that was not part of what the original scope for the designer to do was. My understanding that, that the digester complex, a lot of that may have been added after we got into it?
Okay, if you're going to start talking about specifics, we need to go into executive session, and I think you need to go into executive session, I can tell you why.
I'll take a motion, we go to executive session.
Second.
To discuss potential litigation.